You can hear us?
I've already, he can, he can.
He's just not responding.
Councilmember Broson, can you hear us?
Yeah, but it's a little bit echoey.
It is on our end, too.
Okay, stand by, we're gonna mute everybody here before we go live. All right, good evening. This is the February 2nd, 2022 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
I see, see Councilmember Olson. Are you there, Justin?
Justin, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, but SWCTC is muted.
Okay. We'll let Joe kinda work through that.
Got you now, Mayor.
Oh, there you go. He was calling for roll call, you good, obviously?
I'm here.
And then...
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Just for the public, so that they're aware, we are doing one council member remote this evening due to, he was not feeling well, and we wanted to make sure that we have the proper protocols in place, and Councilmember Broson is joining us remotely. All right, next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity, if someone wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so. We did have a signup sheet out in the entryway, and we did have two people that did sign up, and I'll mention their names, and they can come up and just state your name and address for the record, and just as a friendly reminder, there is a three-minute limit on, on open forum. So we'll start with Sharon O'Boyle.
My name is Sharon O'Boyle, and I live at 9300 Great Cloud Trail South, Great Cloud Island Township, and I made it through about eighty-nine pages of the EAW on comments. I would request that we have time to review the three-hundred-and-seventy-one pages and that nothing be settled tonight. I also have questions about conflict of interest with, with members or affiliates as far as who is a realtor, who is not, when you recuse yourself, what the policy is, and what the policy is on, if this proposal on Mississippi Dunes would move forward, what the policy is, and who would be sued if something goes wrong? Because according to the EAW and all of the information that I've read so far from the DNR and all the other organizations that responded to the, to the EAW, and the research that I've done on the, on floodplain, where it's not just nationwide, it's worldwide, that there should be no housing developments put on a floodplain, or anywhere near a flood, floodplain. Polte Homes has involved two other companies, so do you sue Polte Homes? Do you sue the city of Cottage Grove? Do you sue the other two companies? Do you sue all three companies, or do you sue the owner, or do you sue, file a lawsuit against everybody involved because you know what is in the EAW? And it was requested that an EIS be done. I know from what I read with the, with the DNR, we know that climate change is a fact, we know that there are endangered species on the property, we know that that property is not suitable for development, and that it will impact climate change in a negative way. Period, you know, we know that. So if the, if the council, if the city of Cottage Grove moved forward on that, knowing that, then at some point, there'll be accountability. So that's, that's what, what I, and I would like a response on the lawsuit aspect and, and conflict of interest. And who would, if, if this went forward, and you need to remove all of the sand that's there, who's making the money on that sand? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, and then Bonnie Matter.
Hello, councilmembers.
Hello, Mayor.
Justin, I hope you feel better soon. There's so much I could say, okay? I won't even start, I won't start. But I do one thing that really disappointed me, okay? Really disappointed me. A consent agenda? What is a consent agenda? Do we have a written consent agenda?
Yeah, the consent agenda is what the staff and conversations and any questions by councilmembers are considered non-controversial.
Right, there you go.
Yep.
Keyword, non-controversial. And we've spent a number of months talking about the whole Mississippi Dunes aspect, and now we have gone through an EAW, and a three-hundred-and-seventy-one-page document was put into the consent agenda. I was really disappointed. What's that about?
Well, as far, as I just shared with you, if, and I'm assuming, I can't speak for all the council, but I know I read through it, and the information, if there was something that was controversial as it relates to, there was something glaring coming out of the EAW or that, then I'm assuming it wouldn't be on consent, or staff would be making recommendations for additional information, but at this particular point, after reading through it...
Okay, so, and each, each of you have read through that document?
I, I can speak for myself, I did. Well...
Councilmember Dennis? No, I wanna know.
I always read my materials.
Three-hundred-and-seventy-one pages, you did that, awesome.
Three-hundred-and-seventy-one pages, and I did it with reading glasses on.
Great, good for you, Councilmember Cambada.
Our packet for tonight's meeting was nine-hundred-and-eighty-five pages long, actually.
Great, I'm glad to know that. And same thing for you, Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, over different times that we've seen the, the information, I have read it.
Over different times that you've seen the information, okay. I have a real, real concern about this. This should be pulled out, and there should be a discussion with the public about what the findings were. And here's the other thing, to say that you're going to send it to the planning committee, who are all volunteers, we've been told that, they tell us that, they're volunteers, they're not responsible, that, and then make them say it's okay, is not right. So that's kind of where I am. I'd, I'd like to just read this statement, a cons, a consent agenda groups the routine, procedural, informational, and self-explanatory, non-controversial items typically found in an agenda. Not a three-hundred-and-seventy-one-page document, it's been discussed for months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so is there anybody else that wants to speak? Yes, if you wanna go up and state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mayor Bailey, and councilmembers, including Justin. I hope you're feeling better as well. My name is Lisa Mueller, my address is N. 5001 810th Street, Ellsworth, Wisconsin. I've also been here through the months and have made a number of comments to the group. I'm here tonight with two requests, number one, to pull this item from the consent, consent agenda and add it to a regular council meeting agenda, so there can be proper, open discussion about the three-hundred-and-seventy-one pages of comments that were submitted by concerned citizens. It's my sense, in having read through only about half of those comments, that there was a great deal of consternation, a great deal of concern, and rightfully so. So we've talked about climate change, we've talked about water quality concerns, we've talked about soil erodibility, we've talked about endangered species, rusty-patched bumblebees, rare birds, I mean, there's sort of an unending list of things that should be considered in terms of developing this property for a very intensively developed housing development. It's my understanding from a member of one of the consulting firms that was given the task of marking trees for the upcoming project, that they have marked on the order of, I don't know, thousands, six, six to eight thousand trees, all of which are slated for removal, and that the property will essentially be razed, it will be bulldozed. And that, of course, flies in the face of any common sense or any scientific recommendations for keeping vegetation on the ground and keeping some, you know, leaving some opportunity for habitat and carbon sequestration. So item one, a significant hopeful request that you'll remove this from the consent agenda and give it proper hearing. Item two, if the city administrator or someone on staff could make the comments available in a PDF form, because it's really, really difficult to read them on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else that'd like to speak during open forum? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close open forum, and I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second, we have motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. Any discussion? All right, roll call votes.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye, in favor of.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Next on our agenda this evening is presentations, we do have one this evening, the 2021 Annual Photo Contest winners, and Jen Lawnmaker, almost got your name goofed up there, is, who's our communications specialist here for the city of Cottage Grove, is going to walk us through this, and then council, when we're, when she's done doing the presentations of the winners, we'll go around into the front and greet some of the winners up in the front here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm very excited to share with you the winners of the 2021 City of Cottage Grove Photo Contest. I was talking with some of the staff earlier, and we figured out that the photo contest has been going on since at least 2005, so more than fifteen years, maybe longer than that, so people are really excited to share their photos with the city. We had more than one hundred entries this year, and it was hard to pick the winners in the five categories. Like you said, several of the winners are here tonight, so I will just briefly go over these with you and share the photo, and then we can have the people who are here tonight come on up. So the first one, Julie is here tonight, she was the winner of the business category, and you'll recognize this as the central fire station, a great shot there at night. Jacob Nelson in the events and celebrations category, a great shot of Park High School graduation. Stephanie Brown, she was the winner in the people category, some kiddos there dropping off their letters to Santa. Ashley, who's here with us tonight, a great shot of a hawk there for the wildlife and nature category. And then Idylline White, she could not be here tonight, she got this great sunset shot for our parks and landmarks category. So yeah, it was really fun to, to look through all the shots and see the great photos and view Cottage Grove through some of these photographers' eyes, so thank you.
Absolutely. All right. So Councilmember Olson, you are with us in spirit, in the front here. All right? I, I, did, did you say, yeah, do you wanna hold that one? Which ones were here?
It's Ashley and Julie.
Ashley and Julie. Oh, there's Ashley. All right, so Ashley, do you wanna come up? Oh, there she is, over there. Sorry about that. So congratulations, here's a plaque for you, and then a little bit of money.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
And then Julie Hall. Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, whatever. And that was it, right? Those were the two? Those were the two?
Yeah.
That were here? Okay. Well, I just will say, as, we'll make sure that the plaques and the checks for the winners get to them that weren't able to be here. Now, I do wanna just ask the two of you, have you done this before? The first time? You've done it a couple times, 'cause I was gonna say, I've noticed, I was mentioning this to Jen a little bit earlier, a lot of new names on winners this year, so it was kinda neat to see we've got more people, like I said, over a hundred, hundred photos, that's gotta be one of the highest that we've had. So continue to do it, we'd love to see you back again, and you too, back there. Thanks again for highlighting Cottage Grove. All right. So next, next, excuse me, next on our agenda is consent, is the consent items, is there anything council wants to pull on consent for separate discussion at all? I'm looking at you two, Councilmember Olson, everything's good? Okay, well then, if no one wants to pull anything off of consent, we'll look for a motion to approve consent.
How a motion to approve?
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, well, we'll do Councilmember Olson on, on the second on that one, if you're okay with that. All right? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I almost did that wrong again, I apologize. Roll call vote, Joe, thank you for...
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. So if you hear for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Eight is approved dispersment, A is to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede, any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Again, again, I apologize, I'm so used to doing it, sorry, Justin. So roll call, Joe.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye, thank you, Joe. All right, next is, nine is public hearings, we do have one this evening, nine A is the Woodward Ponds Third Edition, and Emily Schmitz is gonna take us through this one, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Mayor, council, again, the only public hearing on the agenda this evening is the Woodward Ponds Third, it is preliminary, final plat, and an easement vacation. Just to refresh your memories, the Woodward Ponds development is kind of in the crooks of Keats Avenue and the old military road, which is now the historic military trail. The Woodward Ponds preliminary plat was platted in January of 2020, the final plat for the first edition, which you can see here, I've outlined in yellow, that was a hundred, or, excuse me, forty-eight lots approved in the first edition, the developer came back for the remaining one-hundred-and-sixteen lots to be platted in March of 2021. So what is the Woodward Ponds Third Edition? Well, the builder on the site has indicated that their slab-on-grade product is far more popular than their product with a basement, so they've looked to adjust some of their property lines to create a lot that supports that slab-on-grade product as opposed to their product with a basement. So as you can see here, I've outlined in red the existing property lines in the approved plat, and the green, you can see the proposed new property lines, again, extending those lots, making them just a little bit longer as a part of that. So there's forty-four lots that will be adjusted, I wanna make clear, no additional lots are being proposed as a part of the third edition. And finally, the public hearing is for the easement vacation on the common lots as a part of the Woodward Ponds Second Edition, drainage and utility easements were platted over both of the common lots and the developments, we do need to vacate those in order to adjust those lot lines, and then plat, of course, new DNU easements over that. So with you, I know several recommendations before you, but staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, council, yes, Councilmember Cambada?
Does the change in the footprint for the foundations have a significant effect on the setbacks between the easements and the properties?
Mayor, councilmembers?
So, so on there, it looks like the green lines, they're, because they're getting rid of the basements, they're, they're expanding the footprint, but I don't see any markers delineating by how many feet, you know, so, so as these footprints are getting larger, are they shifting the whole pad back or forward, or are they just increasing the surface area of the pad itself?
Of the building pad?
The building pad, the, the foundation of the homes looks like it's getting larger?
Longer and skinnier, is my understanding, that's the technical term, Mr. Cambada.
So how does that affect its setbacks to, to new ground properties?
They're maintaining the existing setbacks.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other comments at the moment by council? Councilmember Olson's saying no. All right, is the developer here or no? No? So I will go ahead then and open the public hearing, since this is a public hearing, if there's anybody who wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time. Anybody at all? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and council, we have, it looks like three separate resolutions that we'll need to...
Mayor, I can make motion on...
Oh, I'm sorry, is it the first, fourth, part of the fourth, or the first two, I'm sorry? So we did the public hearing, but the resolution is separate.
Right, so we'll go, we'll go to number, you wanna go to number three?
That's why I'm confused, Jennifer, is it...
Are we adopting the resolution?
Should be.
The first resolution under one after public hearings? Okay, so we do one through four.
Okay, so I'll make motion, do we hold the public hearing and adopt Resolution 2022-012, vacating two drainage and utility easements over Lot 13 Block 1 and Lot 37 Block 2, Woodward Ponds Second Edition?
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede, any further discussions? Seeing none, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Who would like to do number two?
I will move that we adopt Resolution 2022-13. I can't read it. Approving the preliminary and final plats for Woodward Ponds Third Edition, which is a 5.44-acre residential development with forty-four residential town home lots.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. I will move to number three.
I'll motion to approve Woodward Ponds Third Edition Development Agreement with Ravine Parkway LLC, Don A. Homes, M.I. Homes, and Woodward Ponds Town Home Association.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede, any further discussions on this? Roll call again, Joe?
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. And the last one, number four?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022... I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-014, approving the Woodward Ponds Third Edition Development Plans dated November 30, 2021, prepared by Pioneer Engineering.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any discussions? Seeing none, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion's all carry. Thank you. All right. Ten is bid wars. There aren't in this evening. Eleven is regular agenda. We do have one item on a regular agenda this evening, which is, A is the McCady Landing Zoning Amendment and Preliminary Plat. And Mike Morosla, you are going to take us through this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, the item in front of us tonight is McCady Landing. An application was submitted by Manley Development. The applicant's requesting to plat 80 residential single-family lots, and also requesting to rezone the property from AG1 to R4 Low Density Residential with a plan new development. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Military Road and Jamaica Avenue. It's an existing homestead and farmstead. There is two single-family lots on the existing property. It is surrounded by, to the north, Cardinal Reserve, to the east, Ravine Meadows. Just going to use the pen here. Ravine Meadows. To the south, Kingston Fields. And then to the west is Walter Store Property, which we just received the application for today. So we'll be seeing that in the near future. As you can see, the site does have some topography associated with it, as it does rise towards the center of the site, and then grades down towards Ravine Meadow, Ravine Parkway, and Jamaica Avenue. As previously mentioned, the applicant's requesting to rezone the property from AG1, Agricultural Preservation, to R4 Low Density Residential with a plan new development. This is consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan allows for a density of two to four units per acre, and the applicant is proposing 3.53 units per acre. So this is consistent with the 2040 plan. The preliminary plat consists of 80 single-family lots, with lot width between 60 and 70 feet, which is consistent with the R4 zoning standards. Also, there is a 75-foot landscape buffer along Jamaica. In addition, the applicant, as a result of the first neighborhood meeting, has committed to preserving the first five lots adjacent to Ravine Meadows here, highlighted in the box in red. These will be Villa or Rambler product. This is a result from neighborhood meeting, which we'll discuss here in a little bit. There will be a homeowners association for the maintenance of Outlet B, which is the 75-foot landscape buffer. And as part of the land, the application, there is a plan new development. The applicant is requesting flexibility for setbacks. The R4 zoning standards recall for 10-foot side yard for the house, applicant's requesting 7.5. And then for the garage, it's 5 feet. The applicant actually wants to increase that to 7.5. And then the front yard setback is 30 feet in the R4, and the applicant's requesting 25. And this is consistent with a lot of the developments we've been seeing throughout the community, these standards. Access to the proposed site is provided off of Military and Ravine Parkway. However, the Military Road access will be removed someday. As Military Road will be vacated and removed and become a trail when future development occurs in this corridor, we'll continue to study this and determine when is the best time to review, build, review and remove Military Road and transform it to its final state as a trail. However, as you can see on the screen here, the two accesses here on the north side of the site will connect to Cardinal Reserve long-term. And then there is two accesses provided off of Ravine Parkway. One's a full access here off of 66th Street. And then the applicant's also proposing a right-in, right-out in this area as well. There is a detailed sidewalk and trail plan that'll submit with the application. The applicant is proposing to construct a trail along Jamaica Avenue, shown here. We also show on the screen here the future military road trail, which will be replaced by military roads, as I just discussed. There is also an internal sidewalk system throughout the site, identified as blue on the screen. Those are five-foot wide sidewalks that will connect to the existing sidewalks of Cardinal Reserve and the trail along Ravine Parkway. And in addition, the applicant has worked with the city to dedicate approximately 0.6 acres for a future trailhead park, identified right here on the screen. This will be, we would work on this trail. When the trail goes in, we would work on the trailhead park at that time as well. The final design has not been determined yet. However, Zach and I have had preliminary conversations, or I should say, our parks director. Once again, this trailhead park is consistent with the 2040 plan, and so is the trail system. The landscaping, the applicant's requesting to remove approximately 1,783 cal per inches of trees, or 102 trees total. The majority of the trees are around the existing homestead and along Military Road, I'll circle on the screen where they generally are, and they're in this general area here. And there is a few other volunteer trees throughout the site. This will require mitigation of 580 cal per inches. The applicant either can replace those trees on site or pay cash in lieu. However, the, there will be a lot more trees planted on site than there's currently on the site. The applicant's proposing at least 91 boulevard trees. In addition, the landscaping plan shows the required four trees per lot for a total of 320 additional trees. And also, there's a landscape buffer here adjacent to Jamaica Avenue, which has a significant number of trees as well, has 78 trees proposed in there, and potentially more as they'd work through the tree mitigation plan. Just to make a note on the tree mitigation, as a condition of approval, staff will review a final landscaping plan prior to final construction plans and final plat approval. Any fencing that's proposed on the lots adjacent to Ravine Parkway and Jamaica Avenue shall be uniformly designed, similar to as seen at Kingston Fields Second Edition. To the south, that'd be that white vinyl privacy fence. There are four ponds proposed at this application. I'll circle them on the screen here. And there's one interesting thing to point out here, adjacent to Ravine Meadows here, this red box, the applicant, through the neighborhood meeting process, made a comment of providing additional screening for those residents there. So the applicant's proposing to plant a minimum of 10-foot-tall conifer trees in that area. Not every tree will be a conifer, because conifer trees do need space to grow. So the majority of the sites will have at least two on there. And that was a nice gesture by the applicant to address some of the comments made by the adjacent neighbors. Which brings us to the next slide. We did have two neighborhood meetings. The first one was the number nine, 2021. We had 17 residents in attendance. A lot of the concerns were about landscaping, timing. There was some bedrock on site, housing product, design, roadway layout. And a lot of the residents were from the Ravine Meadows development. During the meeting, that applicant did make some commitments, and some of those were, for example, planting the trees adjacent to Ravine Meadows, reducing the product type adjacent to the lots, and also do a number of studies on like road placement and stormwater placement. So the image on the right side of the screen here is the original concept plan, original submittal, I should say. Then, after the meeting, the developer did revise the plan and incorporate a lot of the comments that were discussed during the neighborhood meeting. As you can see, the stormwater ponds were flipped, were now located here. Some of the houses were moved to the other side of the road. And then extensive landscaping was placed here to act, to provide additional screening. The second neighborhood meeting, there's only five residents in attendance. They've had some questions about site topography and construction timing. However, overall, some of the residents afterwards, the developer and staff are working with them through this process. Public hearing noted was mailed out to 107 properties within 500 feet and published in the Pioneer Press on January 12, 2022. We have not received any comments. At the plan commission meeting on January 24, this, there was a required public hearing. One resident did speak during the meeting. They did have questions, as they live in Ravine Meadows. They had questions about these ponds here in the lower right-hand corner, and asked if they were wet ponds or dry ponds. And our public works director responded accordingly. In addition, the commissioners did ask some questions regarding landscaping, grading, and homeowners association. However, the planning commission did vote unanimously to approve this project and recommend approval to the city council. We have two resolutions, two motions that need to occur tonight, and the developers on hand for any questions.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for Mike at this point? The only question I do have real quick, and I don't know if you had something. You mentioned about the question about the ponds, dry versus wet. Ryan, do you want to, or at least tell us what, what is it? Is it wet or dry? Because you know we keep getting those questions from eventual homeowners.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So on the image here, the blue ponds are the wet ponds, and the green ones are the dry infiltration basins. And we've started doing that, so it's a little more clear for residents that they don't have a water feature behind the house. So I think that's been a good change we've been making.
Good, thank you. Because that's why I was asking. I just want to make sure that those blue blurbs on there actually are going to hold water, or should. All right. Did you have a question?
I don't.
Okay. Did you want to speak at all, or? Okay, does any council member have any questions on, with the applicant?
No.
I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments or questions from council for staff, I'll look, who would like to take motion, the first one, Councilmember Cambada?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1052, approving the zoning amendment to change the zoning of the property at 9119 and 9165 Military Road, from AG1 Agricultural Preservation to R4 Low Density Residential with a PUD planned unit development.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Not seeing any roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. And then we have B, who would like to take that one?
I will move to adopt Resolution 2022-011, approving the preliminary plat for a residential subdivision to be called McCady Landing, which will consist of 80 lots of single-family homes and four outlots.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck. When, this spring sometime? April? Fantastic. Well, we're glad to hear that. Thank you. You got it. Welcome to Cottage Grove. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is council comments request. I will start with Councilmember Cambada.
I don't have any requests for staff, but did want to kind of echo that, again, very, very well-articulated information being provided to us from staff. And I know that some of these packets can get long, and I appreciate all their hard work.
Fantastic. Thank you for saying that. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to compliment you on your delivery of our city, State of the City speech that you did earlier tonight. And it's really exciting to think about all the amazing and wonderful things that are happening in our community. The city is vibrant, it's growing, it's alive. It is a place that people want to come, not just to live, not just to play, but to invest and to do business. And, you know, and hopefully for all the new companies that are coming in, that'll be in the business park, we're going to have places for people that would like to maybe not have to drive 25 miles to go to work someplace. They could work right here in their own home. What a, what a nice thought that is.
Exactly.
So, very nicely done. And I know that you put some work into that, and our staff team put some work into that. So, nice job by everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Thede?
And you know, one of those things that people like to come to Cottage Grove for is the fantastic Strawberry Fest Festival in June, the third weekend in June. And, you know, it, those things, a festival like that doesn't happen by accident. It takes a lot of quality people to, to help make it, make it happen. And we love to get participation. So, you know, there's still definitely openings on, on the committee. I don't know that we could have too many. And so if you'd love to, to kind of help out, that'd be fantastic. You can just contact me, find my name and so forth. Or you can go to cottagegrovestrawberryfest.com. So.
Come help us out. There you go. Absolutely. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I, I'm guessing you have some comments about our former mayor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to take a minute this evening to express my condolences to the family of Samantha Crabtree. Samantha serves on our Parks and Recreation Commission. She's also worked very hard on several other projects through the course of her time serving the city, including the inclusive playground. Unfortunately, Samantha lost her dad recently. And it was, it was at a very young age, unfortunately, for, for her dad. And I know that her and her family, who've lived in Cottage Grove for a very long time, are going through a difficult moment right now. So I would just ask that all the members of the council, city staff, and residents at home, take a minute to, to keep the George family, Samantha's main name is George, in their thoughts and prayers as they go through this difficult time. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Yeah, and it's kind of sad that we're going from you commenting about a, somebody that passed away and wanted to make the public aware there is a, who is a very long-term person within the city of Cottage Grove, not even just as mayor or council, but as a local business owner. Former Mayor Jack Denzer, some of you that have been around for quite a while maybe know him, or knew of him. He was the mayor in Cottage Grove from 1992 to 2000. And prior to that, he was on the city council from 1978 to 1991. So we talk about some 10 years up here. That was a very, very long time. And he also operated a gas station on the corner of Belden and Haste, or Hadley Avenue, called Jack's Union 76. And that was well before the, the bridge was built. But Jack was very, very active in the, in the community, obviously getting personally involved with being mayor and council member and such within the city. He was very active with the snowmobile club, the Cottage Grove Snowmobile Club, in getting the trails designated within the community, and was always willing to give back to the, back to his hometown here. So our thoughts, my thoughts and prayers are to the Denzer family. There is a wake tomorrow evening at Cook Funeral Home, Thursday evening, Cook Funeral Home here in Cottage Grove, I believe it's four to seven. And then there is a funeral at St. Thomas at 11 o'clock on Friday. Unfortunately, and it's in the, it's in the obituary, unfortunately, he passed away of pneumonia, which was part of COVID. So it's unfortunate that he was in the hospital when he did pass away. But our prayers and thoughts obviously are with Jack's family. And we definitely know we've got somebody up there looking down on us that's supporting the, the future of Cottage Grove in a big way, because he was a big part of it. So thank you, Jack, for all your years of service to the community of Cottage Grove. And then one other, well, two other items real quick. Thank you, by the way, Councilmember Dennis, for the comments about the, the State of the City. That is, though it's a lot of work and takes a lot of time, it's, it's actually really kind of cool to kind of pull all this stuff together to look at about what we've done as a city over the last year, years prior, including looking forward to what we're going to be doing into the near future. Jen, our, and she's not in here to get her accolades, but she did an amazing job. She just started with us not that long ago, and started working with me on creating the, the, the State of the City. And she did an amazing job. We did lots of tests and tries, and she's very, very good at making sure that we get the finished product in play. So I want to thank her for her support. So I know she's not in here. I'll comment, but if you would please pass that along, I would greatly appreciate it. And then lastly, I just, I did want to just mention, because there was obviously some conversations during the open forum portion with regards to the AUAAR, or I'm sorry, the EAW, excuse me, with the Mississippi Dunes, former Mississippi Dunes Golf Course. And just, just so the public is aware, I mean, that document is available for anybody who wants to read it. And I wasn't necessarily wanting everybody to have to go through on this council and state that they actually read the document. There was a lot of information in there. And I already knew that all of you had done it or would have done it. So if not, that wasn't of a concern. But I also wanted the public to be aware that in a lot of these cases where there's information that's out there, you know, if statements are made to us as a council or in the public, and it's, it's a person's opinion, please, whether it's, listen to us, and you don't have to listen to us, as myself, as mayor or council, yes, it's a lot to read, but go read it yourself, because you will realize that any of the comments that were made this evening, a lot of it has been, either it isn't accurate, or it has been resolved, or isn't going to happen, I guess, in, in some cases. So they are very, it's a very detailed report, and everybody in their So they are very, it's a very detailed report, and everybody and their uncle basically input, input into it. And that is why it was actually on our consent agenda. If there was anything that was controversial, an endangered species, or something that was out there, it would never have made it on the, on the, on the consent. But because everything was straightforward, it was very basic, all the answers were, were made, maybe not to what everybody wants in the public, but the fact is, it is a developable site, there is no issues down there that need to be addressed because of endangered species or such. And I just want to mention that for the, for the, for the public to be aware, so that they don't think, well, we're just pushing something through, because that is not how this council does it, and they're very diligent on making sure we cover all of our bases and make sure that we do it right. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as a, as an FYI as it relates to that, and I know our staff will provide feedback to them about some of the things, the questions that were asked, to make sure that they have the information that they're looking for. All right, so with that, I did want to mention that we do have a workshop session this evening, which is open to the public. We will be taking this in our conference room, and Councilmember Olson will be joining us remotely from the conference room, and maybe some of the members of the group, and the workshop, by the way, for the public is, it's just a workshop, I shouldn't say just workshop, it's a workshop to discuss Cedarhurst redevelopment, as it relates to, you know, what some of our consultants are saying to us, also to give some feedback to the developer before they even come forward with any type of a plan. They had some sketches in that, we'll be looking at those, but we'll give our feedback from a council's perspective, and then they'll take that information under advisement. After that, there is no workshop closed to the public, so we won't be adjourning in here, but we will be adjourning in the conference room. So everybody have a great evening.